Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan here, Green, LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Rhindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Motion to excuse Counselor Green giving notice to us two weeks ago that she'd be out of town. Motion would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Hopefully, she's someplace warm. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Approval of minutes for the quarterly roundtable workshop of March 1st. Motion be in order for the approval of those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Be or not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the regular city council meeting of March 1st also. Need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on those minutes? Be or not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the council, we'd ask that you state your name and your address to the clerk. Is there anybody in attendance this evening that would like to address the city council on non-agenda items?
None.
Okay, we're moving on then. Adoption of the agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Be or not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a consent agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the consent agenda. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience for consideration. This evening, we have five. The first one being consideration of request to keep chickens at 35005 Ridge Street. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a petition from Joel and Sarah Dobler to keep three to four egg-laying chickens, hens, on property located at 35005 Ridge Street, which is near the intersection of Ridge and Park. Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances relates to the keeping of animals and sets forth requirements that must be met to keep animals within the city. Article 3 of Chapter 14 relates to the keeping of fowl. In the past, we have mailed out, once we've received a petition for chickens, we've mailed out letters to all those neighbors that join the property. In this particular case, the applicant had already talked to two of their neighbors and had submitted their letters of support with their documentation. And then, based on the letters that we mailed out, we had not received any further comments.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Joel, I think I heard you were here. Would you like to speak to council on this item?
Um, I think I've already, uh, I wrote up, like, a little something for Mr. Moore of why I was looking into him and that's kind of what I got there.
Okay. Okay, any questions of the petitioner at this time? Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the petition from Joel and Sarah Dobler to keep up to three to four chicken hens on their property, subject to the following conditions. One, the chickens allowed will be female. Chicken hens, no roosters allowed. The applicant is granted a one-year trial period, at the end of which, the applicant will need to come back for counsel for approval to keep the chickens. And the applicant should be limited to approximately four by 10 coop, similar to the style which was pictured in our background brief.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think with the location of where they're at and with all the residents around them approving, or not all of them, but majority of them, and what we've done in the past, I think this meets the criteria of what we've done with other residents that are wanting chickens. I don't see any issues, am I in?
No, absolutely. Joel showed me the layout. Given his property, you're all familiar with it. I mean, it goes on forever to Woods, where he actually has deer and other wild. Come in his yard. It's as close to a farm setting in the city as you can get. And, uh, and knowing the family will take care of things.
I agree with you. The location is perfect for this.
So, one thing I did want to bring up, though, and it has nothing to do with Joel and Sarah's application, but I appreciate them doing that because there are numerous residents within our city that have chickens that you see on, uh, in town that don't come to us for this. In fact, the fire department was just on one, what, John, three, four weeks ago, where they took a shed and converted it into a chicken coop and they actually started on fire and burnt the shed down with the chickens that were in it. And I couldn't find nothing on file that we had it. So, they're in the city. We, and I, and the people are doing it right. I appreciate it. I don't know how we can kind of track down a little bit better. And I don't know if it's a problem. I don't want to say it's a problem, but, you know, at least make them come to the council and discuss that and see if it is good or not, you know?
Well, so the neighbors don't have to put up with it. I mean, you know, if it's, like, this location, I mean, it's, you know, I don't know what the depth on this property is, but it's very, very deep. And really wouldn't bother any neighbors as far as, you know, where it's going to be put, for the most part. But some of these people are putting chickens possibly, like, where that fire was. That was a pretty close residential area, if I am thinking of the right area where that fire was. You know, there may be neighbors who are hesitant and saying, hey, you know, we're smelling it. We're, they're not taking care of it. That's always been our biggest issue, is the smell and the taking care of it, so there's no vermin riding around. If we don't know about it, we can't, we can't check on it.
Yeah. No, that's kind of what brought it to like, John and I were both on that call. And the property backed up to what the people in the town long considered the frog pond area. So, it wasn't that unless the median neighbors, we didn't have a complaint, but I was like, it was just shocking to, you know?
Yeah.
When we get there and he said he had, you know, poultry in this building that was burning. You know, I'm like, I don't remember seeing that in some of the stuff. So, and then talking to some other people, they're like, oh, yeah, they're here, they're here. So, it's out there. Maybe the public just needs to be informed. They should come to council so we can discuss and make sure it's good for, you know, the whole community at large.
Yeah, I agree with you, Rob. Okay, any other discussion on the item? Any audience participation on this?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Item number two is consideration of memorial request from Ron Rybar family. Mr. City Manager?
The city council is scheduled to consider a donation gift request agreement submitted by the family of Ron Rybar to sponsor the chili cook-off for the next five years. The agreement was submitted in accordance with the city's memorial policy and the recreation board considered it at their March 2nd meeting and recommended to council for approval. The city manager and recreation director did sit down with Ron's son and wife to come up with an agreeable way of recognizing this memorial while still keeping kind of ownership of the event. And that's part of your packet, the flyer in your packet. Unfortunately, Ron, the son, was not able to be here tonight. And so, rec director Margot Van Hove is to answer any questions. But we did meet with them. They're acceptable to kind of the flyer and the amount of recognition they're getting and to our estimated budget for the next five years. And it could continue after that, but they thought, let's try for five years and then see where we're at after that.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the donation gift agreement for a memorial in honor of Ronald J. Rybar, with if I have your agreement to fund the chili cook-off.
Support.
Motion's been made in support. Any discussion? Margot?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't look up to see you on the screen there. Would you like to speak to this?
Um, I, I mean, I don't really have anything. I just, Mr. Rybar was a huge supporter of the Parks and Recs programs. He came to all of our senior socials. He used to bring his grandchildren into the park and play. So, this is kind of a neat little memorial to him. And he used to be at the chili cook-off from beginning until end, so. We'll do well by his name.
Very good. Any questions of Margot while we got her up there? Thank you, Margot.
Thank you.
Is there any other citizen comments on this item?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. Any discussion? It's a very nice gift donation in the gentleman's honor there. And we appreciate the family thanking of us and the chili cook-off, which will make it even easier to put on and hopefully make it continue as another great event. All in favor?
Another example of citizens coming up, step up to make the city another positive boost for the community. I mean, that is really nice.
Yeah, definitely. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of special event activity, mobile food vendors, Starcraft Brewery. Mr. City Manager?
The council is scheduled to consider a special event request for a mobile food vendor from Starcraft Brewery to have a mobile food vendor, Scalise's, or I'm going to murder that name, I apologize, Wood Fired Pizza on the following dates, from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. And they have dates for March, April, May, and then June and August. Last fall, the city council approved a very similar request for this food vendor for three different Sundays in October and November. And with, due to the fact that they're limiting it to one time per month, I know some of the later dates are multiple days. Administration does, is recommending approval.
Thank you.
And then, the stars are here tonight in the audience room, if you have any questions.
Mr. Starr, would you like to address the council at this time?
Oh, not necessarily.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special event request for a mobile food vendor for Starcraft Brewery to have a mobile food vendor, Scalise's Wood Fired Pizza on March 28th, April 11th, May 7th, June 26th, and 27th, August 20th, 21st, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion?
The only question I have is, I know they've been there at Starcraft before on different events. Has there been any complaints? I mean, any negative, you know, feedback anyways?
No negative feedback from the public that I've received.
Okay. Any other comments? Of course, I have, you know, problems with mobile food vendors. Not so much on Sunday, since the, at that time, the restaurant that's directly behind them is closed. And, um, but now we're adding Friday and two, was it Saturday?
Two Saturdays.
And Friday, Friday, Saturday, back-to-back, August 20, 21st, and then Saturday, Sunday, 26, 27th. The Sundays, as I've said, don't really bother me. But now we're getting into the days that, you know, restaurants are definitely open for business. And again, I feel as though that takes away from our brick-and-mortar restaurants. And I will not be voting for this again. I understand that, you know, it's, if it was an event, and I'm not seeing that it's a special event. And I, I thought we were doing special events, but anyhow. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess I like the fact that it's a kind of a novelty, not novelty, but more of a specialty type of pizza that's really not offered right in that close area there. So, I realize, though, on some of those days that you're talking, for sure, it potentially could impact the restaurant that's right there as well. So, kind of torn on it, but I, I think that it's, it's just once a month, for the most part, except for those ones where it's a couple of days on the weekend. Sundays are good, but, so I think they're, they're making an effort to try to keep it not so invasive. And they're keeping it close to their star brewery. So, it's mainly to support the people that are there. But obviously, people can walk by and pick it up too. And maybe they wouldn't go to the restaurant, but I don't know. So, I'm, uh, I'm going to vote in favor of this just because of the novelty of it and it's special, even though it's not a special event, but it's catering to the people that are in the brewery. That brings a lot of business in anyway, which is good. So, I think overall, it's, it's good for the overall city in this case.
Any other comments? Mr. Starr, you have the podium. Under public comment, sir. Do you have any comments at this point?
Uh, yes. I'd just like to make a statement that we are a brick-and-mortar business and common practice for our business is to use food trucks. And I feel that if we're not able to do that, we are putting at a disadvantage to other businesses, especially now in this climate.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay. Is there any other public comments?
None.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. Any other comments, council? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Nay?
Nay.
Two nays, motion does pass.
Thank you.
Item number four is consideration of special event for the Richmond Police Officers Association Pig Roast. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Richmond Police Officers Association, or RPOA, to host a pig roast and golf cart rodeo in BB Park on Sunday, August 1st, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The RPOA is a nonprofit association of police and communications officers in the Richmond Police Department that provide activities such as Shop of the Hero and food and clothing for families and children in need. They were not able to do their main fundraiser this year due to COVID. And so, they're looking at alternative ways to do something creative to help them raise funds for their work of providing food and toys and clothing to the children in our community. As such, they've come up with the request to use portions of BB Street Park on that Sunday, August 1st, to host a pig roast in the area near the Pavilion Community Center to the Tike Track, as I outlined on the map, and then have a golf cart rodeo on the essentially back half of the festival field. And I believe Julia, Bill Kazanowski, and Dana McLean are here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any of you people would like to say to us about your new event?
Oh, of course. Well, um, yes, this event is to raise some funds, but it also is a great opportunity for the community to come together again. This is not any specific group. We are inviting the whole community. And we're excited about the possibility of them getting to know our officers because our officers are going to be serving them. So, I think it's a great opportunity for a community event to bring people together as well and raise money for the community as well.
Thank you, Julia. Dana or Bill have anything to say to add to that?
The only thing I have to add to this, and I'm not sure what you received in your packet, regarding the golf cart rodeo, we're open to ideas. If anybody has an idea of what we should do, I do have the three listed. It's obviously not in stone. Also, with the golf cart registration form, I did make a change that says that the city of Richmond and the Police Officers Association is not responsible for damages to any carts. That was not on the previous form that I had. We will also be giving away a gold medal, per se, to the winner of the golf cart rodeo and a certificate.
Question on the golf cart rodeo. Is that going to be limited only to registered carts in the city of Richmond? Or is that going to be open to the public?
No, only to the registered carts in the city of Richmond.
Okay.
Which I believe there's roughly 45.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Not saying that everybody's going to attend, but we're hoping for a really good turnout on that one.
Okay, very good. Any questions of the RPOA at this point? Nope, thank you.
Great idea.
Bill's got nothing to say in the back corner there?
He's wondering if you're going to feed him afterward.
No, I think that this is a good thing because it's going to be a community outreach event so that the community starts to get to know some of our officers, some of our newer hires. And it's also a good thing because they're raising money for some of the needy people that they'll be able to take out and, for Christmas shopping around Christmas. So, I think it's, all in all, a very good thing.
Upon approval, how would one get a ticket to this?
Well, and that is actually what we have been discussing. I think selling tickets and/or offering tickets was going to be difficult ahead of time. So, what we had planned is on, on our Facebook page, you can allow us to know if you are planning on attending and how many you are planning on attending or you're thinking about attending. Also, when we finalize our, our plans and are, we're going to post information about it in town and they're going to be able to scan to their phone on the actual invite and let us know if they're coming as well. Once, on the day of, we are going to have a, I guess, a booth set up right at the food table where you'll be paying for a ticket for whatever items you're going to be having. There's going to be hot dogs and chips for children, but some people don't like pulled pork, so they might want hot dogs. There's going to be a separate cost for those. So, no pre-sold tickets, however, but at the door or at the table will be offered.
Very good.
And we're also going to advertise that we have, we are expecting a certain, we're just going to say 250 people and we're going to have enough food for 250 people until it runs out. Unfortunately, there's no way we can get an exact count of how many people there are going to be there because we may have walk-ups. But we're going to plan ahead right now for 250 people.
Very good. Any other questions of the group? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request from the RPOA for a pig roast and golf cart rodeo in BB Park on Sunday, August 1st, 2021, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., with approval of the beer and wine permit and the use of the areas of BB Park shown in the map.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea, just another event to bring people together and get to know the community better. I'm sure the officers will be on hand to meet and greet also. I think it's, I think it'll be good.
I think they, they get this started this year and then next year, when we're clear, to have the long tradition of the Valentine Dance at our local banquet hall and this event. It'd be a great thing for the RPOA to put on. It's a lot of work, but, uh...
I was going to say, are you volunteering to help?
Not at all, not at all.
Because we might need that.
You run Good Old Days, I'll run your dance for you.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Um, once, if this gets approved, we will be reaching out to the fire chief and Richmond Lennox EMS and letting them know of the date and letting them be aware of what's going to happen, possibly have a fire truck there and an EMS truck there for the kids also.
Mm-hmm. Yep, very good.
And we are looking for volunteers, if anybody would wish to help us.
What better night to do that, while we're on record?
Yeah.
Can I rule them out of order? All right, back to the table here. Is there any other audience comments on this item?
None.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. Any other comments? Nope. Hopefully, we have very good weather that day. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five. Consideration of special event, Richmond Knights of Columbus Tootsie Rolls Sale. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their annual Tootsie Rolls sale on Friday, March 26th, and Saturday, March 27th.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their Tootsie Rolls sale at the intersections of Main and Division and County Line Road and St. Clair Highway to City Side on Friday, March 26th, and Saturday, March 27th, 2021, from dawn to dusk. That the Knights of Columbus agree not to be in Main Street and Division Intersections on Friday, March 26th, from 2:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. And further, that the Knights of Columbus agree to sign a liability waiver.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Annual event. Not sure, were they, Michael, do you remember? Did they do it last year because of the COVID?
Uh, they did not do it in March. They did it on October.
Okay.
For Columbus Day.
Okay. Very good.
So, they're trying to catch up.
Yeah, absolutely. COVID's hurt a lot of the nonprofits. Any other discussion on this? Is there any audience comment on this?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We wish them good weather also. Moving on to Ms. Lennox, manage from the city manager, sir.
Uh, all of the departmental budgets have been submitted. So, the city treasurer and I are beginning our work to go through all of that and make recommended changes to the council. At the next meeting, we will have an item on the agenda to set the budget workshops. And so, that'll be at your next meeting. And then, as we've had, this is our second council meeting in this format, where it's the split format, where the, the board is together in person in this room and the public is in the community room. We are slowly transitioning our, our other boards over to that. Last week, we had, I believe, Cable Commission met in person. The BZA and Planning still met virtually, just due to the number of public notices that had already gone out saying it was going to be a Zoom meeting. But pretty much everyone this month is transitioning over to the, to the in-person meetings. So, if the public sees a meeting notice in our calendar and wanted to come to one of the meetings, it would be this format.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
Uh, no.
Council comments? Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Dennis?
Nothing.
Rob? Good. Michael?
Uh, no, just nice to see a lot of people in the audience today coming for their, for their items. It's really nice to hear from the people that are requesting to... It's really nice to hear from the people that are requesting to do things, so thank you for coming.
Agree. Agree. Um, today being the 15th of the month, uh, Happy St. Patrick's Day this, uh, Wednesday. Um, EDC will be meeting at 7:00 o'clock on the 18th. The TIFFa will be meeting at 7:00 o'clock on the 24th. And our Parks and Recreation Department on the 27th will be hosting the annual Easter Egg Scramble. I don't think we're having, and Margot, you're still there, are you not? Yes, you are. Could you tell us, uh, do you have a plan, because of COVID, I know things have changed, do you have a, a plan for, uh, the 27th Easter Egg Scramble?
I do. So we're not going to do a scramble this year. Um, we are going to do kind of a drive-through Easter bunny experience where we're going to prepare 400 bags for families and then we're just going to hand the bag to the car as they come through. The Easter bunny's going to kind of do their little Easter bunny wave and stuff and give, each individual child has to be in attendance in the vehicle to be able to receive a bag.
Okay, very good.
And that'll still be at the same time. It'll begin at 10:30 and we'll have it all completely blocked off like when we did our Gleaner's Food Banks this summer. So we'll have like two lines of traffic coming in and...
And that would be regardless of weather?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, regardless of weather this year.
Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that would take us into April. Uh, the, um, yeah, one of the things we'd like to announce is that on April 1st, uh, which is the first year that we've done this, we've cut it back 30 days, I believe, we are going to be having, uh, the overnight parking on curbed streets will be allowed as of April 1st, where I think in the past, we were April 30th.
April 30th.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
So this is the first year. Uh, we've cut it back a month due to the weather. Um, and usually we get maybe, maybe one snow in April. Hopefully, we don't get any this year. And then that would take us right into Good Friday, uh, Easter weekend on the 4th, and city hall and the community center and library will be closed on Friday, the 2nd, which is Good Friday. And the 5th will be our next regular city council meeting. Uh, also, the schools will be on spring break the week of the 5th. And I think that's all we have. Was there anything else we needed to put on the calendar? Okay. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most been made and supported. There is no discussion on the adjournment motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.